Okay. I'd like to call to order the special advertised meeting of council for November 16th, 2021. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a few items on the agenda this evening. First is Resolution Number 61 of 2021 regarding the Featherbed Lane-Chetty settlement. Mr. Crosson, would you be kind enough to handle that for us?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. President. Resolution Number 61 of 2021 is a resolution of Concord Township, authorizing...
License left.
Okay, sure. A resolution of Concord Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the waiver of the payment of transfer tax related to the sale of 8.83 acres of portions of certain properties owned by Leon and Bernice Chetty to Concord Township. Whereas Concord Township and Leon and Bernice Chetty have entered into an agreement of sale into an agreement for the sale of real estate and grant of easement and declaration of restrictive covenants dated July 8th, 2021, according to the terms of which the Chettys have agreed to convey 8.83 acres of their properties located at 668 and 630 Featherbed Lane, Garnet Valley, Concord Township, to the township, portions of which will be used as part of a proposed walking trail and for open space purposes. And whereas, the Chettys will also subject 34.47 acres of the portions of the Chetty properties will retain to a conservation easement held by Brandywine Conservancy and the Museum of Art, also known as the Brandywine Conservancy, all of which benefits the public and preserves open space. Whereas the township has the right pursuant to the terms of the conservation easement to enforce the conservation easement upon 30 days' written notice to the Chettys should the Brandywine Conservancy fail to do so. And whereas part of the consideration for the purchase of the 8.83 acres and the subjecting of the 34.47 acres to a conservation easement, the township has agreed to waive its portion of the realty transfer tax that would otherwise be due as a result of the conveyance of the 8.83 acres. Now therefore be resolved that the realty transfer tax that would otherwise be due on the sale of the town... On the sale to the township of the 8.83 acres of real property owned by Leon A. and Bernice A. Chetty located at 668 and 630 Featherbed Lane, Garnet Valley, Concord Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to the township is hereby waived effective this date.
That's in form of a motion?
Mr. President, I so move.
That's in a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. A second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that will clean up that part of our agenda for this evening. The second part is an ordinance hearing regarding bond refinancing. I have the proof of advertisement here in front of me. I guess, Mr. Dunio, I should present this up to the report court reporter?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just leave this up here. Amanda, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to... Give the other half of it, excuse me. Yui.
Thank you. So this hearing is in consideration and discussion of enactment of an ordinance that would authorize the incurrence of non-electoral general obligation debt by the issuance of the General Obligation Notes 2022 Series, the 2022 notes, in the aggregate principal amount of $7,302,000 and award a qualified interest rate management agreement related to the 2022 notes. The 2022 notes would fund a certain refunding project, which is the 2021 refunding, consistent of, one, the current refunding of the General Obligation Bonds Series of 2016, and, two, the payment of the cost and issuance of the 2022 notes that will reduce total debt service costs and benefit the health and welfare of the residents of the township of Concord. The township will not be voting on this this evening. They'll be a... Will revisit this particular ordinance for possible passes on the evening of December 7th, 2021. And I understand, is there a Mr. William Kalin present?
Yeah, sorry.
And would you identify yourself for the record, and by that I mean, who do you work for and what is your occupation?
There you go. Yes, sorry. There we go. Where was I? As noted, this is for the refunding of the 2016 bonds, just on a quick thumbnail, since the broad strokes were addressed already. As of close today, the interest rate would be 1.69%, resulting in a total savings for the township of in excess of $411,000 over the life of the loan. So effectively, working like a mortgage refinance, you're saving money by lowering your interest rate.
Okay. Amanda, is there a...
I have two questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. If you could address for the council, Section 4, where it talks about, sets forth the principal amortization schedule and the maximum annual debt service, and then it talks about payments at the maximum interest rate of 15%. Well, obviously, the council would not be interested in any such rate, so why is that language there? And what... Why is it here and what does that mean?
Yes. So that language serves the purpose of addressing BCD requirements that the maximum interest rate be disclosed. Granted, in this situation, we're fixing to maturity, so unless some future township council decides, terminate this fixed rate, the rate would become variable at which point in time if something terrible happened to the economy, like 15% maximum interest rate would... But that's completely within your control.
So the interest rate, if I can interject here, is the rate that would be agreed the day we go to closing, but as you said, if for some reason they wanted a variable rate, it'd be like the advertising when you buy a car or something, it could be a maximum rate of up to 15%.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is anyone on council of any other questions?
Just a quick question. On December 7th, if council decides to enact this debt obligation or bond refinancing, you'll provide the current rate?
Yes.
At that point in time?
Yes, I will update what the current rate is, and then the next day, you will be able to fix the rate after... Should that rate not be... Some adverse event occurs, we've waited that process.
How long do we... What's the maximum amount of time that we could wait if that rate does go up?
You could wait as long as you wanted.
Okay.
Which would effectively be turning the loan into variable rate debt as of next.
Okay.
Anyone else on council of any questions?
No.
Seeing none, does anyone in the audience or from the public have any questions? Does anyone have any testimony to suggest that this particular ordinance would not be in the best financial interest of the citizens of Concord Township? Let the record reflect, there is no comment in that regard, and we can entertain a motion to close the hearing with the understanding that there'll be... We'll revisit this again on December the 7th.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to close this particular ordinance hearing regarding the bond refinancing only.
So who?
So move, that we have a second.
Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the ordinance hearing regarding the 2022 preliminary proposed budget. I have a copy of that proof of advertisement also, which I will leave to the court reporter. This is only one page, so we don't have to have special delivery for the second one. Amanda, I guess it would be proper to turn it over to you at this point and give us some highlights between you and Bill.
Yep, absolutely. Just give me one second. I want to switch my camera so that the folks at home can also view the presentation. Alrighty, technology. Thank you, everyone, so much. It's nice to see faces in the audience as we're having a budget discussion because it's a very important document that dictates the rest of the year. I will point out, it's a tool that we use to support council's priorities for the year. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm Amanda Sirock, the Township Manager. I also have with me our new Finance Director, Bill Kalin, and I also have the Assistant Township Manager, Terry Grant, with me to help chime in for any questions that council or the public has regarding the document. So if you'll indulge me, I just have a very quick presentation to highlight the major items within the budget. Available in the back also is a copy of it, it's also on our website, but I put some copies there of the public presentation and also the budget, so hopefully everyone grabbed one of those. And this presentation is basically pulling from that, so I will turn this over. So just to very quickly run through the budget overview and process, so this is something we basically start over the summer, and the process is done to evaluate the needs and objectives of the township and to determine the feasibility of the township's capacity to allocate revenues sufficiently to meet those needs and objectives. Some highlights of the 2022 budget are that the budget proposal has a 0% property tax increase. The proposal includes general fund budget of $4,332,000, $32,060. The proposal includes allocated contributions from the general fund of approximately $285,000 to the Concordville Fire and Protective Association. The proposal includes the addition of a new full-time Parks and Recreation Director. The proposal includes over $1.1 million in trail and park improvement projects, and I'll point out also that those have offsets with grant funding. Additionally, the proposal includes dedicated millage to the Rachel Cole Library, which amounts to over $197,000. The proposal includes $200,000 in stormwater management and MS4 pollution reduction projects. It also includes the expansion of our pickleball courts, which I'll point out, that has actually been an item in our five-year capital plan that was adopted in last year's plan, so that's been an item that remains. Additionally, it includes sewer fund operating budget of $3.9 million roughly, and it also includes $1.9 million in new sewer infrastructure projects. The next couple slides are some revenue highlights, so you can kind of understand where the money comes from, and then we'll talk about where it goes next. So this is just an interesting revenue slide that I like to point out. So 35% roughly of our revenue actually comes from Act 511 taxes. Act 511 taxes are made up of real estate transfer taxes, local services tax, and the amusement tax, which I think is, you know, interesting to show. The majority of that that comes in usually is around real estate transfers and then local services tax, and then amusement is our lowest. As you know, if you... For residents, that generally affects like an oasis, a sky zone, they're the folks who are remitting those taxes as per our ordinances. Additionally, the general fund, as you can see with the real estate taxes, they're pretty much have remained the same over the years, so that's why it looks that way. Charges for service, I'll point out, include permits for subdivision land development, zoning, also public safety permits, and then the business licenses and permit section, the smaller portion of the major revenue categories, I will say, includes cable franchise fees, sign permits, and hauler and contractor permits are also in there. So I'll point out here, for the real estate millage, just to run through again, we discussed a 0% tax increase. So if you look at the chart, all the way to the right, the 2022 proposed includes the exact same millage as was adopted in 2021. I will point out that in 2020, as you all know, we had the reassessment that rolled into 2021, so there was a 45% decrease made by council to have that revenue neutral with the new county assessment that we had to do. So I get lots of questions that surround this. We broke this out this year primarily residential. So residential taxpayers in 2021 paid for the whole year on average $222 a year. And I point this out because many of us have cable bills in a month that are more than this per year. So that $222 that we get on average from the average taxpayer and for township taxes breaks out accordingly into the different sort of areas. So in the general fund, that money is really split from the millage between general purposes, which are day-to-day operations, and fire service. So out of that $222, $68 goes towards general purposes, $40 goes towards the fire company. For those that have fire hydrants and pay the fire hydrant fee tax, it's $26 that is apportioned there. We additionally have millage that is dedicated to the library, and $28 of the 222 average is going there. And open space, as you know, Township Council has put a lot of priority on open space, and if you notice, it's $60, which is very similar to the amount for general purpose that's going into that, just to show, you know, just to re-up that commitment towards open space. Next slide. Now I'll highlight some of the expenditures. So general fund and fund balance, this is government... I'm sorry, governmental funds and fund balance. So the total proposed expenditure across the governmental funds, this does not include our proprietary funds, which are the sewer funds, so this is the governmental funds, is $9.7 million roughly. And with that, we also have fund balances noted, and this is full, not just... This includes restricted, and that... Those amount to about 11... I'm sorry? Did someone say something? Oh. $11.9 million. What I'd like to point out additionally is in capital reserve. So the capital reserve fund with fund balance shows 6.00, roughly $6 million. We have about 2.9 anticipated in expenditures, and about 84% of that fund is restricted for a purpose. So it's either for land, trails and parks, traffic agreements, and there's some infrastructure money set aside additionally. So I always like to point that out because a lot of times I have, you know, calls about, oh, the surplus or all this, and to be honest, a lot of that money is already committed. So I just like to point that out to folks so they understand. So general fund, which is our over-operating, it's a governmental fund, the general fund proposed expenditures are $4.3 million roughly, proposed in the 2022 budget. That is apportioned out in the pie chart. Hopefully, everybody can see the numbers. The largest percentage there is our public works, that includes everything with snow removal, people, equipment, and work that's happening. But the general fund is the main operating fund and includes expenses for personnel, general administrative, tax collection, buildings and codes, public works, road paving and maintenance, building maintenance, capital construction, professional services, snow removal, code enforcement, fire services, engineering, zoning, public safety, animal control, township-owned property maintenance, insurance, parks and trails maintenance, et cetera. Additionally, I'll point out that our personnel costs are roughly about a third of the overall expenses. So now we get into proprietary funds, which proprietary funds are the business funds, so they act differently than our other funds. So they account for the business activities, i.e., we provide public sewer. So those... The funds in the sewer fund are made up of the operating fund, capital funds, and debt service funds. For 2022, we are... Have in our proposal $7,630,820. And to point out, the sewer department and their function, they serve over 2,500 residents, over 200 commercial customers, and they maintain 67.5 miles of sewer lines, a 1.8 million gallon per day plant, a .0635 million gallon a day plant, 15 pump stations, and six privately owned pump stations. So you talk sewer, it's mostly talking about a lot of capital, so it's a good segue. So capital planning. So I'd like to point out the importance of capital planning. I think this was one of the best things our charter did, was including this five-year planning. And capital planning is integral to a healthy financial picture for the township. Maintaining high-quality infrastructure is essential to the economic vitality and quality of life of our community. I like to highlight also in bold, I note in there that we have been extremely successful, and I would like to thank our professionals in that regard as well, for receiving millions of dollars in grant funding. Concord Township has been extremely successful in our county for securing major dollars, whether it's state, federal, or local grants. Additionally, the five-year capital plan reflects over $28 million over the five years between sewer and township. So some notable capital projects that are included for the 2022 year, now talking about that year instead of the five. The proposal includes over $1.1 million in trail and park improvements. Some of those improvements include the expansion of the pickleball courts. I will note that that expansion and the cost for those courts is allocated in our Open Space Fee and Loo Fund, which is a fund that is created, it's per one of our codes, and it's monies from developers goes into that fund, and that's how that project is being funded. Bush Hill Farm Master Plan, which we'll be working on, which I'll point out again, we had grant dollars for that, and the First State Trail Connector feasibility study is also included in there, and that is also grant funded with us having a match. We also are planning to spend over $250,000 towards historic preservation projects, $200,000 in stormwater management and MS4 pollution reduction projects. For on the sewer side, we have $900,000 at our main plant, that includes some modernizing, some technological upgrades that are necessary, and we also are including $1.9 million in new sewer infrastructure projects for neighborhoods who are in need of public sewer-ing. Those new infrastructure projects for the 2022 year currently include Concord Road North, which is about $750,000, Cambridge Downs, Clayton Park, Smithbridge, Conchester. We have roughly $500,000. A lot of that in this year is going to be some planning, and we'll see how far that that sort of goes. The Governor Markham, Hemlock and Glenview, we have $345,000, $310,000 listed there for those projects to get them started. And then with that, I... Those are my highlights. I have some discussion points that I'd like to have with council on the following items for us to discuss further, and then from here, I have questions, and then I'll take any public comment and questions from council. But I'd like to organize some of the discussion topics to make it easier for us to start the ball rolling. So one of the discussion items I have noted is sewer capital planning. John, I believe you're gonna maybe talk about that. I can give a precursor. We recently had a application in for a stream charge, a stream discharge in a neighborhood near Water Wheel and Mill Race. I'm looking at Ken, your neighborhood. And that came through, and I think we had discussed doing some public sewer-ing there, and that application is very, you know, something that needs to be discussed further. So with that, John, I will turn it in your direction.
Yes. As the Township Manager had indicated, we have a current application for a storm... For a sewer stream discharge treatment plant on Water Wheel Way. And this topic came up before, but before this thing multiplies in that neighborhood, which could be very, very expensive to each of the homeowners, I would like to make an amendment to what we have presented to include Mill Race and Water Wheel Way as a future sewer project and add it to the 2022 Capital Sewer Plan. And would also like to move some of the budget expense from 2023 to 2022 for Cambridge and Clayton Sewer Project. As planning is further along, we expect construction to start in 2022. And additionally, our sewer engineer noted that construction for Governor Markham and Hemlock and Glenview will be in 2023, with the planning in 2022. I'm just suggesting that we make those edits to what we have presented.
I was also at that sewer staff meeting, and I think the cost of a stream discharge system, let alone the permitting, I mean, these are just the hard dollars to install, are close to $50,000. And I think when we have subdivisions that probably are at least 40 years, if not older, the life of the septic systems are probably at their end, and just as we did in Penn's Grant, one and two, and we've done in other parts of the township, sometimes we have to move a project ahead of another one, and I think that this is the opportune time to do that. So Amanda, I don't know what we would need to do procedurally in order to make that change if all my colleagues agree in sort of shuffling the deck to allow for Water Wheel and Mill Race to be moved up into the batting order and pushing everything out a little further. I think I'm seeing everybody nod, yes, or John, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have a question, just because I'm looking at the five-year plan. It doesn't... Am I correct that that was not... It's not... It was not within our five-year plan, so it's that...
No.
That one is not moving up, that is then is inserting it?
Inserting and moving every shuffle into that.
And prioritizing it?
Yep.
Do we feel like that moves out something else? Because I see probably the furthest thing out there that we haven't discussed is the Revere Pump Station conversion and Willet's Way.
I think that, John, if you want to...
Well, it's a matter of priorities. You know, we do have sewer staff meetings every month, staff presents issues, and we discuss them and come here prepared with some budget numbers and projects, and maybe two months ago, this hadn't surfaced, but based on current information, that's why we need to shuffle, as Dominique says, need to shuffle the deck a little bit.
Do we think that that would push by inserting this project? Do we feel like that pushes out things like Willet's Way, which was budgeted for '25, '26?
Well, I don't think it's... In the long run, I don't think it's going to push that out any further because there's so much planning and so much permitting that has to be done. I think on its own, that might have been pushed out further, just because the amount of paperwork and legwork and DEP approvals and things of that nature, easements that have to be received and obtained and delineated. So I think to answer your question, yes, I think if you're looking at it as a chart, you're putting something in line in front of it. My personal opinion, I think it's still going to end up where it is as we progress through with the engineering and everything else.
I also will point out too that some of these are dependent on other projects happening. So Willet's Way, based off of need, and then based off of that relying on other things to happen, is sort of also why it's not that it just got pushed or whatever. Some of those things rely on the other things like the pump station conversion and things like that to happen in order for those other things to happen successfully.
Sure. Do we give... Do we anticipate any other areas of the township, such as Water Wheel and so forth, perhaps arising? You know, obviously, it's difficult to predict those things, but do we have any other kind of maybe sensitive areas which could pop, so to speak?
I would say the reason that this got prioritized or brought to our attention is when we heard a resident was going to spend $50,000 of their money for the stream discharge system in. And if you take that a factor, in my opinion, which was part of the reason for my making my decision-making process in this, you take the burden on the resident, you take the age of the development, and it just seems like it was a perfect storm to maybe push this one ahead. to maybe push this one ahead and give some of our residents some relief. The other thing to keep in mind, as we do these, no one has to tie in immediately. You tie in if your system has failed, or if you go to sell your home and the sewer line is available. Ironically, and you've been through a few of those meetings where no one needs it, no one wants to tie in, once we build it, hurry, I think we get these four or five calls a day, okay, where can I get my plumber started to tie in? So I do think that it's one of those cases that if you build it, they will connect.
So in the event that we, because like Amanda said, some of these, you know, when, as we extend the infrastructure, that takes it closer and closer to other folks as well. Are there any, would, would doing this project over Water Wheel Way area, does that open up sort of another phase for any other neighboring areas down the road?
My recollection is, this is the end of the road. It would be like Penns Grant 2. We went in there, we did that, and now we know that one's done.
Okay.
If you start looking at the plan over the last six, seven years we've been doing this, a lot of those numbers are, we're starting to sewers in more and more neighborhoods. I also think that we're going to be running them up Concord Road this year, I think, is in the, in the budget. Get a lot of service to those areas. And we've also now have them available in Brandywine Summit, to a degree. That's another problem child, and we also have a proposal to maybe attack that from another direction also. So I, I just think when we heard the, the stream discharge and all the paperwork involved with that, it just seemed like the right thing to do. Right now, they're on a pumping hole, I assume, and they would probably have to continue for the year until we're ready to get this started.
Yeah, as I've said many, many times at meetings, onsite systems are only temporary. Eventually, the homes will be connected to public sewers, and it depends on a lot of factors. The weather, frozen soils. You get in the wintertime when the soils cannot accept the flow from the houses into the ground, doesn't percolate into, into the ground, into, into the septic system or whatever onsite system they have. It could happen this winter. Maybe there's another neighborhood we don't know about. So we, we may need to shuffle some projects next year. I mean, that...
Is there a specific number?
Month by month, we, we, we talk about these things at the sewer staff meeting, and things come to light, and action has to be taken.
I think it's a good thing to point out too that our sewer planning is very proactive and connected. So as you know, we're small staff. So our SEO and our entire group are very close in talking about every time we have a septic failure or anything happens. And that every year, we actually sit down based off of the Act 537 Plan that the township redid several years ago, which is a planning in place that you must or required to do by the DEP. And we sit down every year and evaluate that process. So for the most part, we pretty much know anywhere that can be and will be sewered. It just happens that sometimes you'll wind up where a neighborhood winds up with more issues that present themselves sooner based off of what John Gillespie just said to you. And then that's where the priorities sort of get bumped up, which is sort of where we were at with the Water Wheel Way situation.
And so Amanda, what is the specific proposal from a financial perspective?
From a, yes. So basically, what happened, we have estimates from Walt, we'll work in numbers. I know that the Water Wheel Way in particular was about $450,000 of a project. So I will work that in. Additionally, we know on the apportionate, we just had a staff meeting, and Walt noted that some of the planning was more happening on Governor Markham and the other Hemlocks. So what we'll do is we'll apportion that appropriately based off of Walt's estimates, and then I'll have that finalized for the final budget that gets re-put out and advertised.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thanks, John, for bringing this to our attention.
Okay.
If you are ready, I can move on to the next discussion. And sinking fund is more or less, we, as you know, just right before this, we had an ordinance for refinancing. So we will, depending on what happens, we will probably include some of the savings numbers in there based off of if council decides to move forward with adopting that ordinance at the December 7th meeting. Unless anyone's opposed, that's sort of, I'm just looking at a head count here.
I think that's where we left it, that based on the presentation by Mr. Calhoun, we had the hearing this evening, and we will put this as an action item for the December public meeting, at which time council can debate it further and decide whether to vote yes or no.
And we can have some numbers there that are reflective.
Okay.
Additionally, I want to talk about tax collection services. So this year, council had asked Bill and I to look into online tax collection options for our township. And we have done that. We've spoken with some of our colleagues in other municipalities. Bill did a lot of that legwork when he sort of walked in the door, and I'll let him sort of say that further. And, you know, I just want to point out, we're looking at this from a strictly sort of business perspective and just looking at the function of tax collection itself to determine and provide you all with information on that, and then decisions can be made accordingly.
I spoke with our representative from Berchheimer, currently collects our LST.
Hold on, one, okay, Norma? You want to move over a little? Everyone else here?
I just didn't want to yell. William Kalin? Or Bill? They call me Bill, sorry. So I spoke currently, Berchheimer is our LST collector. So I already had a contact with them to gain information. That's who I've presented and given a proposal to council in your packets from. Essentially, the function of Berchheimer would be to collect our real estate taxes. That's their way of presenting an online option as well. And the way that function would work is essentially how it works now, except Berchheimer would be the ones that payments from the residents would be remitted to. And with doing that from, you know, my standpoint financially, that would be a cost savings of roughly about $10,000 a year in just the collection aspect. The way that it would work is we would only be paying Berchheimer essentially for the per bill rate. Right now, I believe we have about 5,300 tax bills. They would charge us per bill, $3.50, and then plus whatever postage would be at the time of mailing. The $3.50 is, it's a dollar fifty for the bill, and then it's 50 cents for every additional line. And by line, I mean, we have a library tax that is specific, we have an open space tax that's specific, so they charge an extra fee in order to print those lines on the bill. We would pay them when they mail out the bills, and that would be our only payment to Berchheimer during the year. And then they would function as tax collector, and they would represent us as, you know, in between the residents as, you know, our, our tax collecting agent.
So then, I, you know, I can sort of add in, goes back to sort of the discussion of online sort of modernization of our tax collection. It would move all of our tax collection to this entity, to Berchheimer, and folks would be able to pay online and, and work that way. We would still be able to have the lockbox function where folks can drop it off here in the lobby. So, you know, from a strictly business standpoint with what we were tasked to do, I think, I don't want to speak for Bill, but I think that's, you know, part of that recommendation. It's a savings and, and modernization of the process.
Amanda or Bill, a question on the, the timing of their processing. Did they give any information about how long it would take to process a deposit in an individual's payment?
It, it, I don't want to, I wouldn't say very long. Right now, I would, I, I believe that's somewhat of a problem, and it's more so, I think with the mail, as well as the bank, had issues on both ends. I, I can find out for certain from them, but I would be surprised if it's no longer than, you know, a two or three-day processing period. Once they've received it, they would post it. The same as it's kind of now where, as soon as the payment is received, under almost most circumstance, it's almost applied immediately, you know, once it's received. So it, it's still also that timing of, you know, if a resident mails their check, kind of, but you know, what's going to happen with the mail still. But once Berchheimer physically receives it, I would be surprised if they don't same day, you know, process payments on a same-day basis. And it's just a matter of timing of how long it takes, you know, if it's later in the day, you know, kind of the same with your normal bank. If it's later in the day, might just post the next day, but I'd be very surprised if it took longer than, you know, a day or...
If we can just confirm that?
Yep.
There's an automatic processing of that payment, and there's no delay into the individual's account?
I have a question also. Are they offering online payments? And if so, once the payment is made, what would be the date? Would it be the date they make the payment, or the date when the online payment actually goes through?
So it, it should be the same process as it is now where it's the date on the, post date of the check. So when you're near the end of discount, or the end of the discount period, and you kind of roll into that phase, as long as your payment is postmarked within the discount timeframe, discount will be applied. So it's, because again, we all know the mail is what the mail is. It just, it depends on the postmark of the resident's payment, which is the process it currently is now.
So for the online payments though, would that be the date of the payment made? Because sometimes the processing happens online, the next day, or if it's a holiday, it would be the two days later?
Yes, and that's something that we could most likely work out with them if the holiday did end on the end of the discount. That would also something that council could, you know, discuss with accepting those payments, and then we would work with Berchheimer to make sure that if a resident, you know, postmarked their payment, and because it was a holiday and, you know, the mail took days longer than it normally should have, definitely work that out with, with Berchheimer the same way that we do now.
I also will point out to Colleen in regards to your question, in the proposal from Berchheimer, they note in here, secure encrypted data transmission 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 24 to 48-hour turnaround time.
What was it, 24-hour turnaround time?
Yep, 24 to 48. So if it's a weekend, I don't know if that affects anything, but...
Two more follow-up questions. If a resident pays online, is there any type of processing fee to the resident for that?
No, I don't, I'll let her go.
I, no, I do not believe so.
And can they pay by credit card online as well?
I believe yes, I can confirm with them though. That might be, I, I think that's something additional that we'd have to set up with Berchheimer. I, I think under normal circumstances, they have most people pay via check or money order. It states that in their, they do not accept cash. I know that for a fact. They, they will not accept a cash payment via mail via person. But I, I will, I can reach out to them and talk about credit card options. I don't know that they get a lot of credit cards, which is why they probably don't include their proposal. Because again, the credit cards would, somebody would either have to go there, or they do it online, I feel like they probably H kind of bank transfer where like you type in your account information, the same as if you were to type in your credit card information, you would just type in your, your banking, and it would be an ACH transfer. But I, I can, I, I will reach out to them and talk about the credit card.
Well...
Forward for final...
Is the budget reflecting the change?
No, the current budget has the revenue expenses as to what we've done previously. It does not reflect change.
Would, can we make this decision at the meeting, or do we have to do it tonight? That way we can get these answers to these questions?
Yes, you, you should do this at the hearing so that I can have a final budget prepared and then re-advertize so that on the 7th, you're adopting that final version.
Everybody agree?
Agreed to move to an online.
Support the change.
Okay. And then you can either by email, I guess, get us the answers on those other questions, and we can share them that night.
Sure. Okay.
Sounds good.
So then the last discussion item here, this was something that came up last year. If you all remember at our budget discussion last year, there was a woman who was here in the audience, and she said, "I didn't realize that we were paying the fire company and the general fund X, Y, and Z." And we've talked about it, I know, before. The idea here is that, so right now, we have the fire hydrant fund, which goes to those folks who are within the code of a fire hydrant, they pay a specific fee. But then we also have broken out in the millage, you have the general purpose portion, and you have the fire protection portion. And the goal here is to make that more clear to folks and change just the fire hydrant fund to be a fire services fund. And then those monies would be reflected there, so they don't sort of get lost in the overall general fund. So I know we've, you know, randomly talked about that, and it really came to light after we were approached by that woman after last year's budget and thinking of how to do it. We've talked with the auditors, we've, we've even had conversations with Hugh just to make sure there wasn't any issue with doing so, and there is not. So I think it would, you, us to really make that very clear, the contribution that goes there, and to sort of put it all in a fire services fund bucket. And then from an accounting standpoint, it's very simple because that's a, that fund becomes very clear. It's literally hydrant and fire protective, and money's going out only to the fire company and then to Aqua for the fire hydrant services.
Can you go back to slide seven?
Sure.
Your presentation? There.
Okay.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, if we were doing this next year, guy in the fireman, he would be in with the fire hydrant?
So, yeah, so that hydrant fund would show, you know, $66, and it'd be called Fire Services Fund.
Okay. And, and general purpose then would just be general purpose?
Exactly. And then there's, you know, sort of ways to figure out how you want to do that with the millage because some LST is apportioned there. So we would adjust it accordingly to make sure that it reflects the now-current $285,000 amount.
I guess my only question with that is some, majority of our residents pay for fire hydrant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct.
But some do not, so you're going to have to have, some of the fire services tax would be lower for the ones without fire hydrant service. I guess where I'm going is you just have, keep the hydrant the way it is and just have a, another heading for fire, fire company.
Well, it's the accounting function, if you think of it like this. So your tax bill will still, it will be reflective of it, and it'll be different for fire hydrant fund. The millage will be shown broken out separately like everything else. So then in our accounting world, in the fund itself, you will see hydrant and you will see protection.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, is why can't it just have a separate heading for fire company and leave hydrant where it is, and some people don't get their charge for?
Like just create a new fund and just have fire protective services in there? I mean, that's possible too.
I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing it out there. So you would have, instead of we'd have a one, two, three, four line items on the tax bill, we would have five.
Sure.
What's everybody think? I mean, I don't know.
I think the idea is just to make it a clearer picture to folks.
I, I like the idea of pulling out the fire company contribution out of the general fund portion so people know what's going to the fire company. But I do think it could be confusing when you're doing the bills, because ju, just the people who have hydrants should be billed just for the hydrant.
And they will be.
The other ones would have a zero, so that would be it.
Uh-huh.
It, the way it would essentially work would be that where, right now, the tax bill just has general purpose. So for DCD purposes, we don't specifically say we allocate fire comp, millage for the fire company. That's a decision that council, you know, makes every year. It's within the ordinance, but it's a portion of general purpose. So what Amanda's saying, accounting-wise functions, where we're saying, make it one pot, it'll be two lines in one pot where, or we could make it two separate lines on two separate pots. Bill would reflect what you're speaking about, Dominique.
I, I like the idea, I, I like to get, I like the idea of getting the fire company out of the general fund.
The tax bill would have five lines.
You guys have to deal with it.
And then, yeah, it would be on us to deal with it.
Whatever makes their life easier is okay with me. What's everybody else think?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I would just suggest, I'm not sure if the proposed reallocation wording that you have down... wording that you have down where it says reserve, I think it would be better to clarify that open space reserve versus just reserve. It sounds like it's reserves for any type of purpose, but I think these funds are generally for the open space funds.
So.
Is that correct, the 1.39?
I guess in-house, that fund is called the Reserve Open Space Tax Fund. But I think it, for time, it's just gotten shortened, shortened, say, out on documents, Reserve Tax. If, that's something I could, we can easily change to specifically say, you know, Reserve Open Space Tax. And then the Open Space Fund still says Open Space Fee and Loop.
I think on the tax bill, it's important for to be very specific on what it's for.
Yeah. And with going to council site, you know, making that switch to Burckheimer, we can tell them specifically what we would like all the say and counsel.
And then if nobody has anything else about fire services or the other discussion topics, I also just want to point out, as you know, we're still getting in these, this last week, some insurance premiums back. So additionally, as I give the same spiel every single year coming into final, I will take what we know as soon as I get that bill and we will edit the final budget before I get it out and release that back out for final adoption. So the final version that gets put up there, we have percentages built in that we anticipate, but sometimes once you get the bill, it can be a little less or it can be more. I know we're a little thinking about it on the pollution side of some of our insurance is anticipated coming a little higher. So as soon as we get that, we'll incorporate that and I'll make sure council knows and then the public will have it reflected in the final.
Any other questions? Just in general questions on the budget?
Yeah, any in general, and that's public or council.
Amanda, could you speak? You referenced in some of the initial highlights, money for parks and trails, the new pickleball courts, et cetera. Can you just dive into a little bit more detail, sort of line items in the budget and, and speak to some of those, some more of those specifics where they are in terms of funding for parks, trails?
Sure. Absolutely. So.
Just sort of give some references.
So some of those items that are built in have to do with the Octorera Trail. We have Phase 1A and 1B design sort of wrapping up at this point. And that is through grant funding through DVRPC and DCNR. And we're working on finalizing that. Additionally, I noted earlier, we have the First State Trail, which is a connector feasibility study. We received grant monies from DCNR on, and that would be a spur. It's actually outlined in a document that the township did on an overall planning for trails that they received grant funding from. And I believe that was 2016 maybe, before me. But in that planning document, this is identified. And this was something that we're doing a feasibility study to see if it would even work. And it would basically take it off of near the Pico right of way, John, am I correct? And, and find a route to get down to the First State National Historical Park. Additionally, we have funding in here for a master plan for Bush Hill Farm, which is also grant funded, a portion of it through DCNR. And that is to, as everybody knows, the exciting news of this year, the headline of the century in Concord is that we were able to preserve the Chetty property. And with that, the township will be receiving roughly, I think it's about eight acres in fee simple outside of just the conservation easement. And it was the perfect timing for us to be doing a master plan of that entire site to determine uses there. So we have that. Additionally, when you get into some other improvements in the parks, there's some fencing things we're talking about potentially at Coleman and even the AME Church gets included in some of these buckets with site improvements and others. Do you want me to highlight anything else, John? Or is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, one question I had was with regard to survey work to be completed for the Garnet Valley Greenway. We had applied for about $100,000, I believe, from the county for a grant for that and we did not get it.
Yes, and we have some of that built in as well.
Okay.
We have monies built in for that to start looking at some more of the design parameters there as we continue also to keep applying for grant monies. I know council was very interested after the feasibility study to keep that ball rolling on that trail, which Garnet Valley Greenway is the old Pico right of way trail for folks that aren't familiar.
And then we continue funding for our concert series for support for Darlington, the Grist Mill.
Absolutely.
Et cetera. And I know we're looking to do some improvements to the comfort station and the snack shack.
Yep, with the help of Public Works.
Okay. And, you know, as we, as we hear of opportunities from the, the community and react to them, we're, we're finalizing the open space plan now with things like, you know, one thing that we've been hearing a lot about is basketball courts and things like that. Seems relatively simple. Obviously, devil's always in the details and things are always more expensive than we anticipate. Do we, do we have money in capital funding set aside for parks and trails such that, you know, the opportunity arises for that?
Well, A, it would depend on estimates.
Okay.
Where and what. We would have to take a look at that, evaluate what we have built in currently to the plan and council would make those decisions on prioritizing those decisions. Remember, particularly in the five year capital plan, I mean, these are tools we're using, right? So things happen. For example, everybody knows right now, if you try to do any project, there's a supply issue, right? So we have projects that get deferred. We have projects that, you know, get hung up and we budget it for one year and then we don't get the parts. So now I have to carry that over into the next year. So, you know, that all comes a part of that discussion. And if that's something council wants to pursue, once we come out of the open space plan, 100% that can happen. Not a problem. You have monies committed for those type of projects.
Right. And I know we have money set aside specifically, as you noted, to restricted funds for things like Bush Hill Farm and so forth. So as that master plan is developed or as opportunities arise over there, we can.
Correct.
Alte those. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to editorialize a little bit. I'm glad to see the senior expo being in here. We did miss it this year because of COVID. So we're putting that back in again. And also the senior consortium, we haven't had meetings in a few years. COVID has really put everything aside regarding some of the senior activities. One other thing I'd like, I'd like to bring up and I'm involved with COSA and the Senior Community Services. They had a very good Zoom conference yesterday for an hour with the county people and the senior community services people about all the good things that they do in Delaware County, thousands and thousands of meals that they deliver out, Meals on Wheels. And we traditionally have given them a contribution. And I would like to raise it up a little bit and this year make it $2,000. I think we've for, forever and ever, we were giving them $1,200. But with the economy being the way it is and the price of meals and supplies and things like that, they didn't ask for it. But in my heart, I would, I would like to, you know, do something good here in Concord and give them a little bit more. So I'd like to raise that from 1,200 up to 2,000, as long as my fellow council people will agree.
I have no problem with that. I agree.
I think that's an $800 increase just for folks who.
Okay.
I think we could find that in the budget, right?
We kept these little lights on, off over here. We could probably save that.
Very tight with the purse. We all know this.
Amanda, with regard to the, with regard to open space funds and purchases, we've allocated a number of, a significant amount of money towards open space the last few years. And of course, we've also been spending a significant amount of money the last few years. And with the pending purchases and expenditures with regard to Chetty, Wilcox, some of the others, which are, which are significant, then I believe we are, we are down around $3 million, give or take, that, that we'll have available for purchases. And of course, while we, while we look to plan as best we can, those, those tend to be opportunities that arise due to estate issues, things like that, as, as folks reach end of life and make legacy decisions. So not always something that we can plan tremendously in advance for, but while $3 million sounds like a lot of money, it can also go relatively quickly. And so is there, can, can you speak to ways that we can raise funds for open space, be it through either, I guess, through a referendum to increase the dedicated millage for the open space fund or a specific bond if a particularly large opportunity came available? Just what, what are our revenue options with regard to increasing open space fund, funds?
So basically due to the open space tax, open space fund and the referendum that was originally passed, anything, and again, I'm not our solicitor, so Hugh can speak more eloquently to that. But based off of councils want to increase that tax millage or even borrow, quite frankly, I mean, it would be something that you would have to go back to the voters on to decide if you wanted, you know, if you were thinking about doing that. You know, the bond process and issuing more debt, electoral debt is really what you would be doing as part of that process. I believe if it's dedicated to the open space, you would also be back in that same boat. You know, there, there aren't.
Do we, do we have the ability to, as, as council, increase the opens, the millage rate for open space?
You have the ability, but you have to follow the legal parameters of doing so based off of the original referendum. And it's my understanding from our solicitor that you cannot just deter, decide to raise that without going back to the voters. I believe that's how that gets handled.
And, and raise it in any level, not even a minimal capped level?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And so.
There are caps in the charter is what I think you're referring to. But I think when it comes to the open space tax fund, that is definitely.
That fund, that millage was established through a referendum.
Through a referendum.
Changing that millage would need to be through a referendum.
Yes, that's what I.
Or another option would be to go to the voters for a specific bond if, say, a very large opportunity came up, similar to what I believe Middletown Township did an $8 million bond to purchase the Slaton School.
Correct.
Property. So, okay.
That's my understanding.
Any other questions or comments or observations from anyone? Anyone from the public have any questions? Please come forward. We would need your name and address so the court reporter can enter it into the record. Let me just move over. Okay.
Thanks, Norma.
No, I need to get my notes in order here.
Got a lot of sticky notes there, Kevin.
And I printed them off in, on two pages here, so I.
I'm hoping we can answer everything for you now.
The numbers are small.
If not, you know where I work.
No, no, it's, I think this should be.
Yes, I can give you one, sure.
Let me know when. I'm not.
Kevin Voit.
V O I T, 286 Willits Way. So I, I have about four or five questions and I wanted to circle back regarding the sewer planning for Willits Way. I have copies here of the, I guess, the 2020 and the 2021 five year capital plan. And in the 2020 plan for 2024, about 4, 4,300,000 was allocated for Willits Way Sewer. And in 2021, that number was pushed out to 2025. Looking at the proposed capital budget here for the sewer, there is only, so, so I appreciate the discussion that was held earlier about Willits Way. There is no specific line item for 2025 or 2026 for Willits Way. And it's about $2 million less than what was in the previous two capital budgets. So does that mean it's been pushed out beyond 2026 or is that just something that needs to be added back in?
I can speak to that if council would like me to. So that project is in our five year capital in 2025 and 2026. There is, it's an over $4 million project. So there's $2 million planned in 2025, where do I have it? And $2 million planned in 2026 for that project. Cause that would be split between those two years is how that's anticipated. That project, every year, as you know, that's an extremely expensive project. That is a lot of homes. There's geography issues and things of that nature. That project has been evaluated every single year. You know, as we have, if we have any, with my SEO, if there's septic failures not, there's been a lot of discussion that a lot, the majority of the homes actually are okay. We've had some homes and that's based off the information we have, right? Like that's what we know of based off of permits that have been received. So, and, and some of those areas are higher ground and, and they're not having issues with perk or certain things. So that project has been heavily evaluated. That also with the amount of homes to be added and the cost is another discussion also that council will have based off the rating of our current plant. Additionally, that project is dependent on the Riviera being turned and converted into a pump station. And that priority of that conversion is another discussion topic. So you being a Willits Way resident, you're dependent also on that project coming to fruition.
Okay.
And again, all of which is determined in planning discussions amongst staff and some members of the sewer committee where we evaluate the worst need. And for sewers, unfortunately, you know, the need can arise quickly.
So, so to that point, and, and I'm sure your records are probably pretty well. I know there are a few homes on Pond View Drive, which is a street off of Willits Way that I think might have similar issues. They have direct, one or two, I think, might have a direct stream permit.
Sure.
That might need additional consideration. Just something to keep in mind as you're, I know you.
Yeah. If they're in place now, this one on Water Wheel was new.
Okay.
And, you know, something in place now, those are regulated and there's a lot of requirements that go in with that. And they are required to treat that, I believe. I'm not sure what that one's set up, but usually it's a UV kind of out moment. So, but we do pay attention to that.
Sure. I know the permit was up for renewal, so I wasn't sure if the renewal would have triggered a new requirement.
It's DEP handles that renewal.
Okay, okay.
Kevin, could you repeat the name of that street that was off of Willits Way?
Pond's View Drive?
Pond's View?
Yes. So, so just the absence of, of Willits Way from line item seven was just like a mistake on there or, because there's no Willits Way on the, let me get the bigger copy.
What's he have? Oh, in the presentation?
Yeah.
Oh. Did a column get cut off in the?
It, it may have. But yeah, so, so project number seven in the 2022 capital plan does not currently include Willits Way.
2025 and 2026, how much?
2022 to, yeah, 2026 does not include any new sewer infrastructure projects for Willits Way currently.
You're just saying it's just not noted.
Yeah, so, so that was my concern.
Oh, Willits Way isn't in the note line? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Correct.
Okay, it was probably just something.
I just wanted to make sure because it wasn't there and that's.
The funds for 2025 and 2026 are Willits Way.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's.
Thanks, I get what you're saying.
In fact, Amanda.
Money allocated in those years.
So we'll update that.
It's not in the.
Perfect, thank you. In fact, starting in 2023, we start with the Riviera pump station conversion. And part of that, John, Mr. Gillespie, if I'm not mistaken, is to take that pump station and bring it down to our plant.
The main plant.
Vernon and Cross Keys is actually ahead of you because in order to get from the pump station to the plant, we gotta go through Vernon and Cross Keys. And once the pump station is completely done, then we can head in your direction from there.
No, I, I appreciate that. I just, I was just mentioning, our, our houses at one end of Willits Way are, are pretty old and my house. And my house is 30 years old. I don't want to have to pay for a new leach field and then have to connect when I move. So that's kind of the calculus there. I guess just some other questions. So so there was a comment about adding a new Parks and Recreation Director. And I I'm looking at, I guess, line 454. I don't know how else to reference this in in the budget here. The fiscal year 2021 budget for for a salary of of the Parks and Recreation Department had had $96,000 and the proposed budget is $111,000 or 111,000, rather. Was 2021 not a full-time person?
2021, we were hoping to bring on a full-time person. That didn't happen. So that's what you're looking at there. And then what what we're doing is the current person who's part-time will be transitioning, actually, the work that they're currently doing is events coordinator, basically. And that's why there is a difference there because we anticipate hiring this year.
So what was the what is the proposed salary for that individual?
I think the range that we have in there is 70 to 75,000.
Okay. And then the balance is just a a part-time person or something?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the current staff member plus.
The current staff member plus.
And summer help.
Okay. I guess it was really quick. Speaking of of salaries, Amanda, I noticed that the the township is only providing you with about a 2.9% raise this year. Being in the professional services industry myself, I I know how hard it is to retain qualified people. Over the past couple of years, it's I've lost few very good people. And I would hate to see something like that happen here at the township. You know, over the past three or four years, it looks like Amanda may have only received an effective 5% raise. You know, with current inflation, I hate to say that she might be making less money now than she did three years ago. I might offer to the Township Council here that in order to retain qualified staff, you may want to consider giving her some additional money.
I did not send to me.
I'm just saying. I know sometimes I make I I make difficult requests, but I think that one I might want to consider.
Thank you for your comment, and we'll take it under advisement.
Of course. And then one final question. So on line, looking towards the end of the budget here, there are several, so I'm looking at line, I guess, 389 under the Capital Reserve Fund Revenue. There's a few few locations in the budget where there is this unclassified revenue. And in particular, for this Capital Reserve Fund, there's about 1.68 million dollars in unclassified revenue. Are you able to speak to?
Yes.
Speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So what the township was doing previously was unclassified revenue is can be. So the capital fund doesn't have a dedicated revenue stream, right? So what you're doing is essentially using fund balance. So all of those, I told you, 84% is committed. So basically, what you're doing is you're saying, this is how much money we needed to float that. This year, I'm actually glad you point that out. We've reflected that differently because I thought it would be clearer for folks to understand. And with the help of Bill coming in, that was one of his great improvements to the document, I thought, which is great with fresh eyes, right? But if you look and go to the expense page of that, you'll see utilization of prior year fund balance, which creates that at a zero now. So that gives a better, you know, description of what we're doing to balance that budget. We're using the monies we have in place because there isn't a dedicated revenue stream there.
Okay. And then I guess I guess one final question. Nowhere in here does it talk about the ARP funding. Obviously, that's a a good amount of money that the township will receive. You know, there's a lot of capital projects here. Any plan on talking about that in this budget or is that just separate funding?
I think we wanted to treat that, if I'm if I could speak for my colleagues, we were going to treat that as a separate item. I think we had a town hall type meeting back in October or November. August, was it? Was that long ago? Wow, since the summer. And I think we heard some comments, and I think we'll probably have another one if everyone agrees, probably first quarter of next year, to discuss and brainstorm some more with how to use that. But I think we wanted to have this stand alone from that money.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes.
Gene Gobel, G O E B E L. Congratulations on the healthy financial picture. I had a question on how well that positive position is insured on section 486, general fund expend insurance. The liability, professional umbrella, auto insurance, what kind of insurance values do we have? 1 million, 5 million, 10 million?
Well, each thing is different, essentially. Off the top of my head, without the policies in front of me, I wouldn't want to speak to exacting anything. I'm happy to share that information, though. We're actually getting a lot of those numbers in now as final. But in that umbrella sort of of information, I'm sorry, Bill's showing me something. Does it have the value? 10 million, the umbrella liability is 10 million on that. In that bucket's also, you know, public officials liability, automobile liability, commercial property, general liability, and some of those are individual. So like if, you know, we have a property, it's valued, and then there's an assurance cost to that. But in the general aggregate, it's 10 million in the umbrella liability policy.
Do we have E and O insurance for professionals?
Yes. Errors and omissions?
Yeah.
Yes, and that falls under our public officials, I believe.
Okay, great. Do we have a notion? It sounds like we're acquiring quite a bit of real estate. Is that titled in the name of Concord Township? And roughly how much, how many millions of dollars of real estate at today's values might this township own? Certainly in excess of 10 million, I would presume. This this lot we're on might be 10 million, correct?
Great question. I just don't know off the top of my head. Yeah. I mean, I can get you that.
Yeah, I mean, just suggesting, you know, if the township owns $30 million of real estate and has $10 million of umbrella insurance and a snow truck driver hits and kills Joel Embiid, we might be in trouble.
We need him.
And another way to protect that maybe is to consider the real estate assets so the township may be to be somehow separately titled in some safe haven such that it's separate from any possible risk. Back to salaries, Amanda's salary. I see it says only 74,000.
It's also in sewer. I'm also in sewer as well. I'm split amongst those two different because they're two different business activities.
Okay. My last question, something that sort of struck out to me was section 408, landscape consultant engineering. So far this year, we spent $2,200. Next year, we're budgeting 35,000. And then that same expense line shows up in capital reserve for $40,000. What what exactly is a landscape consulting engineer doing and why the big increase?
So we have planning for man sort of master landscaping of certain areas in the township as part of the beautification discussions. Every time we do some of those master plans, you know, additionally, there's stuff that comes out of that. We have money set inside there to make sure that we are doing the appropriate things. I'm not a landscape planner myself. So while it's easy for me at home to say, I want to put that tree there, and the tree dies in a year, I don't do that with taxpayer dollars. So we like to have a plan in place. And we generally will consult one of our professionals, whether that's through Tom Comida or Panoni. They have their own landscape folks that do specific things. And they'll provide us that information of where's the best place to put it and what you should put there, whether it's native and other things of that nature, so.
Sounds a bit high, $190 an hour for Mr. Comida. My experience would be that landscapers that sell you the plants are probably just as smart for for little to no money.
And to be honest, depending on the project, I use specific ones. So we actually have that ability.
Thank you.
Really? Anderson? H E N D E R O N. So I was just, I was 75 Dogwood Lane, 75 Dogwood Lane. The Mills. So I was just coming up here to ask about, we're talking about the sewer funds, and is Fox Valley even in any of those discussions?
Cross had asked me earlier about that. And they had come to us the evening we were talking about the ARPA money. And that is a item that we want to have future dialogue with Fox Valley. The idea would be to decommission that plant, convert it to a pump station. Fortunately, when the age-restricted complex was built in Chester Heights next to, what's the bar, the restaurant there? It used to be the Hilltop, but Ashley's. They had to upgrade the pump station, and we made sure they build it big enough to anticipate that that would come that way. We're going to have to have a dialogue with, I I know Fred Gillespie always sees me at church and asks me about it every week. But after the first of the year, we'll probably be seeing.
Fred and Joe Dotty.
Yeah, Tyler, the whole gang.
Yeah.
Yes. And in fact, I saw Mr. Arders the other day, Wawa. And he even stopped me and asked me about it. So it's something we need to deal with.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure because a lot of residents.
It's outside of this budget, and we're going to have to sit down and talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Carolyn Smith, 102 Mendenhall Drive. Yeah, I'd like to make a proposal. I have no idea how many people in our township have died of COVID. But whatever the number is, I think it'd be a wonderful thing if we planted a tree in honor of each one of those people. Where the trees are to be planted, you know, I don't know. I hadn't thought it that out, but I just thought that would be a real nice thing to do.
Thank you very much for your suggestion, absolutely. We are certainly looking to plant more trees and update our policies around how we dedicate those as well. And so certainly, I think that is a wonderful idea. Thank you.
It is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd like to get a this motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Wow, that was quick. Second.
Second.
Second, John Gillespie. Second, John Gillespie. Thank you for coming out.
I.